Um, okay. Now we're official. Um, we are gonna move on to the third item on our agenda, which is the annual elections of planning board members. Um, so I will entertain motions. So currently we have Jonathan is our secretary. We have Jim Barrett as our vice chair. And I sit here as your chair. And I think those are the only three positions we have. Am I missing somebody?
Chair, vice chair.
And the secretary.
So this is something I asked Grant, um, and this is up to you guys because I will be taking the minutes moving forward, um, or staff. Um, you're not required to elect a secretary. That's up to you. I was trying to figure out maybe what else the secretary would do besides doing minutes. So it's really entirely up to how you guys want to do it. But staff will be, um, drafting the minutes just to take that off your plates because it's, it's a big admin. Yeah, okay.
Jonathan's been loving it so much.
I know. I don't know, Jonathan. What do you think? All right, great. Well then, I'll entertain motions for chair and vice chair.
For making a motion, would you be interested in continuing as a chair?
I would be happy to pass it off, or I'd be happy to keep it either way. I'm I'm gonna remain neutral. I'm gonna kind of see what you guys want to do. It's been a little bit. I would say that the subdivision reviews for me were pretty wonky. And I'm sure that will not be the last trifecta of subdivision reviews. So if anybody else wants to take a shot at it, I'm happy to pass the buck. But if nobody wants it because it's daunting or scary, then I, I'll stay in it. But I'm, I'm totally open to suggestions.
I would motion Stacy to do it if she wants to do it.
Okay. Give me a second.
Need a second?
Mm-hmm. We need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, wanna have some discussion?
Okay. Let's vote. Four. Shannon?
Four.
Jim?
Four.
Misha?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Jonathan?
Uh, four.
Three?
Four.
And I'll be four too. All right, off you go. It's all yours.
Okay, motion for vice chair. Jim Bear is your current, I don't know, do you wanna, should we ask you, would you like to be the vice chair?
I'm fine with it since it's just a matter of taking over when somebody's sick or something.
Okay.
Somebody now raised me. Um, I'm motioning to elect Jim as vice chair.
The second? I second. Any discussion? All right, let's go through it. Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Four.
Jim?
Four.
Misha?
Four.
Stacy?
Four.
Jonathan?
Four.
Tori?
Four.
And I'll be four also. Okay. Agenda item three is complete. We can move on to approval of the minutes. Thanks Jonathan for getting those minutes in. So, um, does anybody have any comments or questions about the November minutes?
I have a question or comment, I guess. I understand that Jennifer did the minutes and it, this is just a format issue. Just in reading them, is it possible to put the, um, heading of when there's a change in, like, if there's a motion? Right now they're just listed, you know, everything is somebody said, somebody said, so-and-so said, somebody said. And then, then there's a motion buried in there. So can you just invent when there's a motion or there's a change of topic?
Uh, did I not bold it?
They're all bolded.
Oh, I thought I had bolded the motions. I apologize. Um, yeah, I can check if that works for Grant.
So, so that you can read it and, and be more easily able to find a motion.
Okay, yeah. If not the bullet, we can highlight it or something. I called it because I thought I had done that for the motion. So that may have been from the past few minutes.
Is the mo-, is the motion written in here?
Well, it's, it's hard to find it like on page ten. The bottom of the page, third bullet up is where there's a motion. That's what I'm saying.
They are moved to approve variants. Okay, so there's, but that's where it is.
I think with the ones I did, this was the first one I did, um, it's quite, um, but yeah, I'm not highlighted or something. So you can see that as well. So we won't ask at the time, but each time the topic kind of changes or a new, I'm putting the time so that people can then go over to the video and, and kind of find the detailed discussion. But yes.
Madam Chair?
I'll do it for the rest of today and then she can do it.
So the minutes will be accessed at the city side. It's on the idea? Okay.
And once I upload those, I'm happy to send them out to you, but I'm also just gonna be putting them up in the draft minutes. And then, um, so as soon as I get those within two to three days of the meeting, I'll get them up there and then um, we'll have them in the packet for the next meeting. And then if you have changes or whatever, and then the final minutes will go up there. There's a change, we'll reload it and we'll say, oh, so the ones on the website will say draft until you've approved them at the next meeting. But, um, who has been asked to put them up there with them a couple of days.
Perfect, yeah. Good. And, and since this is go ahead, Chair.
No, 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 no.
Just talking. So if you, the way this approach is, is that there's no commentary listed. It just simply says who spoke.
Yep.
And that's it. And the only way we get the commentary of what happened for the discussion is to go to the videotips. Just so that everybody understands that if that's the method.
Yep.
Completely different approach to doing this.
It, it takes, um, we just, we, we have so many resources at staff. We're trying to take this work off of you. And so it, it took me two and a half hours just to do that. So by putting in all the detailed comments, it just, it would, it would take an entire day. So um, Grant, with all the different meetings, I mean, we have, I think, twelve, thirteen boards or more. So he, and again, I can bring this to him if, if there's a discussion or you have a request to do it differently. But I think the thought is just sort of as long as there's those kind of time markers or how far in, then somebody can just flip over to the video. Um, can do that. And if we have people that are not savvy or they want us to find that out for them, I guess. And if we see that a lot, then maybe we'll change it over. But, um, I think that was the thought on, on this.
I'm fine with it. I know it's just Yeah. Plus there was like some concern about being taken out of context in, in a quick snippet of a sentence. So I think having people listen to it is preferred probably.
Yeah, but I, I think that we welcome any kind of feedback on what you guys think makes it easier. And the whole point is not really for for us so much as to find it, but people who are in the general public opinion to be able to find what they want. So whatever we could do on this that work. Breaking down every, you know.
I think having it timestamped, you know, at the appropriate change in agenda is you can just skip to it if you wanted to on the recording. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Everybody else make comments about the minutes? Okay, let's approve them. Uh, Taya? Four. Shannon?
Four.
Jim?
Four.
Misha? Stacy? Or Jonathan?
Four.
Tori? Okay, and I'm also four. Perfect. Okay, new business. We're interviewing Amy Schilling to fill the non-freeholder board member position. Amy is our sole applicant that is qualified as a non-freeholder citizen. So Amy, thank you for being here. We appreciate having the opportunity to meet you. For those of us who don't know you, um, you have seen in your packet Amy's resume and her application to the board. Um, we do not have specific questions to ask Amy.
Ask before.
Would you like to?
Madam Chair, yeah. So I, um, I checked with, um, Faith and Jim about this. And we do not technically have a formal interview process. If there's questions you wish to ask, we've done it in the past, but there is nothing, um, that is in um, the how this works for award or for interviewing. So it's, it's really whatever you wish to ask or talk about. Um, that's what I was told. So, um, I, if, if there's something specific that you want or you have a list of questions, that's, yeah, we can, you can go with that. Um, also, would you like Amy to step up to the lecture?
I think they can see her, but you could do, if she speaks, the owl will go to her.
As long as it does, yeah. And it'll hear you. So.
You can move forward if you want, Amy, but I think the owl will hear you. That's kind of how this thing works. It like figures out where you are. So that being said, you know what? I guess what I was, because I had asked that question, I, I was trying to dig for those. Um, you know, I thought Amy could just kind of introduce herself and kind of talk about, you know, why she's interested and why she thinks she would be a good fit for the board. Um, so maybe we could start there, Amy, and then other board members.
It's so interesting because I'm being on the other side of the interview table. Because all of my work history in recent years has been human resources. So this is kind of awkward being on the other side of the table, but kind of fun. I, uh, have been a community member for forty-three years, my entire life, born and raised in Livingston. So that's kind of um, fun. And to see the change over the years has been super exciting as well. I think um, from my perspective as being in human resources and seeing the growth of of businesses and employees and the people moving here for jobs, you know, I work in both members. I live over here. And I know that's a huge, um, group of our employees as well that commute. Um, but I think adding that kind of perspective would be something that might not be you know, on your guys' radar. Uh, so I might be able to offer a little bit of different perspective. Someone to know about me? I know most of you guys, so.
Does anybody have question, you know, additional questions? Stacy, did you have additional questions?
Um, these were just the, the three that we've asked all the other applicants. And they were just what you just answered, what, you know? Um, why you want to be on the planning board? Um, so that was one of mine. And what is your background with Livingston or planning? You know, you know, besides just
Yeah, I have no experience with planning them whatsoever. Um, I think uh, it intrigues me, you know, I obviously hear the court of public opinion often, uh, which I don't think is a fair basis to like have any kind of concept of, of my own personal opinion. Uh, so I think that's kind of why I want to get involved as well. I mean, we all read the paper. We all hear people talking, those types of things, but without being fully, um, invested and knowing the truth, I don't think it's a fair generalization to base my perception on those.
Um, and then the last one was a briefly talk about one positive change and one negative change in Livingston that you've seen.
I think that's tough. Um, because again, I don't want to give my personal opinion that might be flawed by
I mean, you're bringing your personal opinions.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, um, I I think that the city, county, community in general, um, I read through some of the growth plan. It was a very daunting five hundred page document. Um, but I, I think the increase in community involvement, I, you know, looking through the minutes, I in, um, I didn't know that you could go to the, the video comments. So reading through like the last couple of public comments, I was like, how? You just want to find out about this unless you go to the meeting. So I appreciate that there is, uh, increased public concern, um, input, whether it's, um, positive or negative. So I think that's a positive. Um, and one, the other part of your question?
It was, was one positive change that's, that's, you've seen it in Livingston and what's a negative change that you've seen in Livingston?
Negative. I would say that, um, the reluctance to promote development.
Anybody else have any questions for Amy? Stacy, did you have anything else?
Um, I guess I, I still kind of didn't get a sense as to why you wanted to be on the planning board. I mean,
So I want to be an active member of my community. Um, I want to help, um, encourage positive growth. Uh, as I said, I think we have, we're not going to stop people from moving here. Uh, we've been discovered as a amazing place to live. Um, so I think we're gonna do nothing but grow. And I think we need to do it in a positive and responsible manner, taking into consideration affordable housing, economic impacts, um, environmental impacts and those types of things. That answer your question?
Anybody else?
Uh, could you clarify? You said that you thought that there was a development, but yet?
And, and without coming to these meetings and being involved and volunteering for a board like this, you don't know the whole aspect. Um, from what I hear is that there's a lot of, um, resistance to promoting development and growth opportunities.
Is it based on, on decisions from um, subdivision applications? Is that what you're referencing?
It's also been in the paper.
Yeah.
But I mean, yeah, I mean, that's where section's been made publicly in statements like that.
And, and those are the places, you know, as a community member, that's where we get all of our information. And, and I think that's why it's important for all of our community members to volunteer for boards like this, to make sure we are getting the whole side of the story. And we are, um, you know, getting involved in our, our community.
Do you envision, um, a circumstance in which you wouldn't be in favor of a, of a subdivision?
That I wouldn't?
Yeah.
Be in favor? Yeah, and hypotheticals are a tough answer, but absolutely.
And you said that you had read part of the growth policy or you skimmed it or trimmed it?
Like I said, it's very daunting.
It's kind of daunting. It's not like something you want to just take and leave.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, I originally looked at it back in November when, or October, I guess, when the position opened up and I originally applied for the position and I hadn't heard anything. And so then when we spoke again, it's kind of I started looking at that and, and what's available on the website, which is quite a bit of information. Um, but yeah. Five hundred and thirty-eight pages is
It's in print at the public library on the desk.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah. I like to hang out. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It is, it's daunting, but it's cool. It's a good reference. I mean, it was a great process. Okay, anybody else? Anybody online? Taya or Shannon or Jonathan? No?
Um, Madam Chair, I, I just, um, want to thank Amy for applying and, um, taking time out of her personal life to pursue, uh, being a planning board member. Um, I, I feel like uh, she would be a good addition, uh, given that she's born and raised in our town. And, um, I look forward to hearing her perspective and, and I'm hopeful that she'll just look at things objectively and, and as we all do and, and add to the conversation um, uh, on topics we have to discuss in the future. I yield.
Great, thanks Shannon. Could we lose Jonathan?
Can I ask you a few questions of you guys?
Yeah.
So, um, what, you know, obviously as a volunteer board, tell me kind of the role of the board and how it reports to the city. And, you know, as an advisory board, is your decisions like final when it, when you propose something to the relationship work with the manager and the commissioners?
I'm gonna give that one a shot and then if I'm, if anybody else has anything to move on, I'm happy to let that come out. So we're an advisory board of the city council. So we just uh, go through a process of discussion and making motions to approve agenda items. But ours are just recommendations. So whatever happens in our meetings, whatever recommendations we send up to the commission are just that, recommendations. And so it's a, as you've seen us vote tonight, you know, the, uh, uh, agenda item will come up. We, um, you know, open it up for discussion. We use Robert's rules. We come to a conclusion. Um, we make that, the motion passes or it fails. And then those minutes or that information should really be disseminated, and this is where I want to make sure I have this correct, by the staff up to the city commission. Um, if there is a time when someone from the planning board would present to the commission, it might be at our annual, um, report. That's happened before. Um, where the chair of the planning board has attended the, the commission meeting when that was on their agenda item. Otherwise, really all of the communication from what happens during the planning board meetings really gets elevated up to the commission by city staff. So Jennifer is our new, somewhat new, but pretty darn new city planner. Um, and so she will be doing that on behalf of the planning board, be that liaison to the commission. And then Tori, we always have a commissioner, uh, appointed to the planning board. So Tori's our city commissioner. Uh, appointed to the planning board. And then Shannon works for the public works department. He also attends the city commission meetings as well. So you know, he could speak, either one of them could speak on behalf of what happened in the planning board, but really it, it goes through the planning department staff up to the commission.
So does the, the, the city will task, pass you with something to look into or something to review?
Definitely, we are required to do subdivision reviews. So that is a Montana state statute that the planning board review a subdivision proposal and make a recommendation up to the commission. But again, it's just a recommendation. It's not you know, the commission at the end all say all for those decisions. And then, yeah, I would say the commission typically tasks us with something, um, for the agenda and that would come through city staff. So the city staff writes all of the agendas for the planning board. Um, and now takes all of our minutes as well. So, and I can't think of
And I, I don't want to like take up a lot of y'all's time. So if the city, if it's a state statute that the board looks into all subdivision reviews that to take some of the burden of that research off a city commissioner because you're doing other things running the city? That kind of the concept behind that statute?
I think we, so it's a public hearing. So anytime there's a subdivision review, it's considered a public hearing, which is different than just a planning board meeting.
Right.
So it's a public hearing. So it's an opportunity for the public to weigh in on that. So hear the proposal and then weigh in through public comment, written or verbal during the meeting on that review process. And then it gives them the opportunity to listen to the developer, the proposal, uh, get as much information as we have. And then listen to our process of, you know, discussion and, and voting on whether we recommend the commission approve it, deny it, or approve it with conditions. So it's a, it's the first sort of opportunity for the public to get a glimpse into that proposal and then ultimately goes up to the commission.
And Jesse?
Yeah.
If I may, we've all voted to put you on the planning board. We just advised the commission to put you on. You won't be on until the commission votes you in. Is that correct?
Correct. So anything we do is just a recommendation. We are not, uh, decision makers for, for the commission. We just make recommendations, just like other advisory boards, like the zoning commission and the U R A and conservation, et cetera.
And Madam Chair, I think that there is another purpose of the planning board and that is kind of, um, the city um, planning department puts together their recommendation in their staff reports as to whatever it is. And then the planning board is to look at that staff report and say whether every, all the i's were dotted and t's were crossed and everything's great. Or to say, oh, but you forgot this one area over here, or we have questions about this one area over here. We need some more information on it. And that's also the purpose of the planning board.
I think it's a component of the process. So the city staff is really supposed to support the, the volunteer board. We're also supposed to be sort of the eyes and ears. We are, we're appointed either by the commission. Well, we're all appointed by the commission. Uh, we're either approved and recommended by the planning board members or if that, if, if there's another, like I was appointed directly by the commission. I was not voted in by the planning board when I got on, but then somebody stepped off and the commission just voted me in. So um, I guess to Stacy's point, the staff is very supportive. So they do typically provide a report. And then we are just supposed to take that, that information from the city staff. And whatever information comes from either public comment or our own perception of what the community needs or desires are, right? So we're, we're citizen advocates.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was kind of my next question. And what are the expectations of?
So it's really making sure you're familiar with the contents of the packet, right? Um, you can ask questions of city staff prior. You don't understand something. Um, but there should also be a staff report, not only in the packet, but also presented at the beginning of a meeting if it's something that deserves that, that type of report. Um, and then it's just showing up and listening to your board members, listening to the constituents in the, in the public and then kind of making sure you can contribute where you'd like to and then, and then vote when a motion comes up or make a motion. Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, sorry, Tori, did you have something first? I saw your hand and then we'll come over.
Oh, just, uh, you know, as a commissioner, um, so the way that I view the boards is that's like an extension of the deliberative capacity of the commission. So in the, in the commission, in any given commission meeting, we might have three different items that would have been, had recommendations from boards or, you know, would have, would have come through boards. And if we were to spend the three hours in the commission meeting that the boards had spent on it, then we, we, it basically just, it's a, it's a citizen volunteer effort to add to the capacity the deliberative capacity of the commission. Typically, boards are, are staffed with people that are either passionate about or have specific expertise in the topic that, that they're, that, that the board is related to. That's not a, you know, that's not a requisite. Not all of us have the same. We all bring different perspectives and different levels of expertise to this board. And all the boards are, are occupied by, you know, a various level of, of expertise. But generally it's, the boards are occupied by folks who have a particular interest in that topic and want to, want to help inform the decision-making process of the commission. And, and, and it really like streamlines and adds capacity to that.
You know, go ahead. And I noticed that when Matthew's here, and I'm sure it's going to be the same now that Jennifer's here, that they kind of keep us on track to make sure that where we're going is within the statute of what we're allowed to do, that we're
Okay.
We're keeping on track because we get a little bit off track. Because we're not, because we are volunteers and that's, this isn't our full-time job and, you know, you don't know everything, which is why we have Jennifer here to say.
No, that answers perfectly, thank you.
Any other questions?
Those are my only questions.
Okay. Anybody else before we vote? Or make a motion? We need a motion.
I move to accept Amy Shilling as a member of the planning board.
Okay, thanks Stacy, a second.
Point of order, Chair. The motion needs to be to recommend.
To recommend.
Yeah, so I move to recommend Amy Shilling to be a member of the planning board.
Perfect, thank you.
As a preholder. Non-preholder member.
So staff keeping us on task. Is there a second? Thank you, Jim. Okay, any more discussion? All right, let's vote. Taya?
Four.
Shannon?
Four.
Jim? Misha?
Or.
Stacy?
Or.
And Jonathan's gone, I think.
Yeah.
Uh Tori?
Four.
And I'm also four. All right, Amy will pass the recommendation to include you in the planning board to the city commission. Yeah, thank you.
And I'll send you the information on the mission words, because I don't know if you will have to be there.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, so thank you for applying, congratulations, we'll see how it goes at the commission level. And then you're more than welcome to stay, we're just gonna finish up the rest of the meeting, but you're more than welcome to go too, so whatever you'd like to do.
Awesome.
Yeah, hang on. Okay, let's move on to old business, is there any old business? No, okay, um public comments, are there any public comments from the public? It's really, it's just Amy in the room. Okay, um any board comments before we, uh Jordan, is there no public works update? There's not.
Could I make a comment here? Um you know about the, the difficulty we're going through with our newspaper?
Yes.
So the Livingston Enterprise is the, is the paper of record. That means that all legal notices have to be in the newspaper so many days prior to whatever. I don't know when you guys get your paper. And it was posting yesterday's meeting of the city committee. So I think that um whether it is recommended to the city commission or someone that the enterprise has to get their act together to become, or they cannot be called the paper of record.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Because um it's a very important position they hold, and if they're not diligent about it, they're in violation of the law. So.
Uh well, I mean, I actually think the city could be in violation of the law.
Or the city.
Uh because the the obligation to, to get that information out to the public is, is kind of on the city. So that, I think that's a good question for our active city attorney about like, what, what do we do with this? In this case, so, great, great question. Um and Jennifer, you can bring that.
Yeah. We, we had noticed, uh yeah, um we had noticed, um I think right when, when the paper was purchased by the larger organizations um that the vast majority of the existing enterprise employees lied. Um so uh it appears maybe a month, month and a half ago. Um I think the rat gives us asking us to get in notices uh earlier if possible, or trying to figure that out, but I will definitely bring this to her because she does the noticing and also the active city attorney um to, to remind them of this concern. Um and and you know, they want they agree, it definitely exists as city, the city's landlord, if we can't get our noticing out.
Yeah, and other entities, legal entities, but noticing for people who's inherited, you know, uh estates and so on. There's a lot of stuff that's, that they are they're given a huge responsibility. And it's incumbent on them to live up to that responsibility. So.
Jesse? Um I have a question on noticing for our own meetings and um maybe I'm in air, but I thought that, that we were, would be given notice of our meeting two weeks before the meeting. And I think you indicated that, that that's only required if we're having a public hearing.
Correct.
But if that is the case, I still wanna know. I'd like to know, um because we've had canceled meetings, and I plan a lot of other things around the scheduled meeting, so I guess I'd like to know what kind of notice you're planning on giving us for the agenda, you know, a week in advance, or is there any, any kind of expectation that we can have for when the meeting is gonna be?
Yeah, I thought it was ten days.
Uh so, you know, that, so the, the noticing for the two weeks, and I've, I've been checking basically legally about this, because it's a little different here than where I came from. Um but the public hearing has to come out. Uh I think it's two weeks, but it's definitely not less than ten, ten days, but if we don't have a public hearing. Um I mean, ideally, I would have left that in your agenda out with the minutes from November out days before, but and I didn't realize I was gonna need to go in and do them. So that took a little longer, and I'm, I'm trying to juggle it with all the others, so I, I do apologize because you guys um Mr. Preservation Mission, it also happened. Um I'm getting these out at the last minute, and now that I know what I need to do and what I'm responsible for, I do not plan on getting agendas uh with minutes from the previous meeting or whenever we're looking at them. And your packet out, um even if there's no public hearing, I mean, ideally, I would have it to you the week before. You know, the Wednesday before your meeting, and so I will do better at that. Um still, you know, and then what I'm, I'm responsible for doing, so I appreciate your patience, well, we'll figure that out. But yeah, no, it's definitely two days before, and, and as far as point uh canceling, uh that ideally will either not happen or will know well in advance. I think for Christmas, it was sort of a last minute with a couple of the boards, just because there was nothing on the agenda that had to get done, and, and so because my staff um is often out for the holidays, and I apologize if we didn't get that up this sooner. But yeah, they don't see us canceling the meetings uh in the near future, do we?
And it's the staff that determines whether there's a public hearing or not?
No, it's, it's whether we have any um any project, so like a subdivision review, we have no applications that are going on for you.
Hmm.
So there are no subdivision applications under review right now. So there will not, as of right now, there will not be a, a public hearing for planning board next month. Um or possibly the following. And so then I think if there is nothing on that agenda, then maybe it's, we, you know, work with Jesse um and, and feel out, do, do you feel the need for this meeting? Um I, I do know, and I will say that um you're gonna get more information about this, but I know Grant Gager, the city manager um is planning on rolling out um sort of our uh implementation matrix, how we plan to do that for the growth policy uh at the, at the February seventh, the city commission meeting. Uh I'll be sending out an email to all uh to you guys, in case you want to tune in. Um kind of identifying what, you know, what we'd like to see different boards and commissions help us with to get that, and, and pulling for us definitely. Um there are a lot of things that we could use your help with. Um we're, we're trying to parse it out to the different boards and committees. Um and, and sort of have a roadmap to how we're gonna implement that growth policy. There's a lot to implement, we know it's been kind of sitting on the shelf, we've had the flood, we've had a lot of other things, the one Matthew left. Um so I, I expect that things are gonna pick up and we'll have a lot to discuss, but they may not all be public hearings. That makes sense.
Yeah, I just didn't know what the rules were on it, so.
Yeah, no, I'm still learning them myself, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Want to comment before we adjourn?
Did you ask for public works update?
It's not on the agenda.
But you may ask the one.
Do it, okay.
Yeah.
I, Madam Chair.
Yes, Shannon?
If, if, if the group would like to get, uh have a, just a quick overview of what's in the queue, uh I'd be happy to speak to that.
Yeah, that'd be great, Shannon, thank you.
All right, um so nothing pre-planned or pre-thought, but uh I'll shoot from the hip here. Uh due to our cold temperatures in November, December, uh really no new projects came in. Uh but it certainly has delayed all the projects that I'd mentioned back in the September, October timeframe. Um from a city's perspective and in our capital projects, we are moving forward with the Green Acres uh sewer extension to Montag and Green Acres, so uh that S I D has passed, and uh we're looking at starting construction on that project in early March. Uh we met with the downtown group last night, and we're gonna move forward with a project in the alley between Main and Second Street, between Geyser and Calendar. So those are two projects that uh are a little over four million dollars uh worth of construction and infrastructure improvements. Uh continuing work with uh local development projects, uh we have a, a project on Garnier and All Spa that was really uh dependent on the Green Acres uh sewer extension, and now that that's going to fruition, we expect that to move forward with uh some uh four plexes at the corner of Garnier and All Spa. Uh the Agrenid's uh Chris Salazinski project is moving forward um. They're off of Park Street, uh Dan Call and the Montana Street Development uh near the, where the old Diamond K. Uh that's moving forward with uh utility extensions and site plan review. Uh the Home to Suites Hotel has uh continued as well, and we just met with Doug Bram uh yesterday uh to kind of put some of the finishing touches on that project. Uh we have the development project on Loves Lane, uh owned by the Laren family, um that's continuing to move forward. And we've, Jennifer and I've uh had discussions with several kind of prospective developers at, on vacant parcels. Um those continue on Rogers Lane and the former Howe property. And then some lots out north of Montana Street um oh, east of where Summit Street terminates and that F to G Street area, there's we've uh been having discussions with some vacant land in that area and its uh possibilities. Um
Garnier.
Really, those, those are the big ones. Um you know, the city commission last night, uh it's my understanding approved a utility easement uh from Todd and Catherine Quizzle, which uh helps us expand utilities from Wineglass Lane off of N Street and, and have a potential for future looping into Green Acres on Tanna Lane. And then I, I do wanna celebrate one success, or at least in my opinion, um there's, was a, a county development on Lama Lane, uh where they were looking at uh five duplexes and weighing the options of uh onsite well and septic system versus connecting to city utilities. And uh based on an administrative rule, uh they are gonna connect to city water and sewer and possibly improve uh the right of way that the city has uh along Todd Quizzle's property, so um with all the energy of getting over a hundred and sixty homes onto city sewer and wastewater treatment, um we were able to have uh a rather small development, go ahead and connect to city water and sewer and have to sign a waiver of annexation to do that, so I'm happy that was a good collaboration with the sanitarium and county staff uh to make that happen, so uh if anybody has any questions on anything, I'd be happy to answer that.
Thanks Shannon. I have a question. Well, comments, thank you Shannon for all the work that you and your department has done to handle, I mean you just listed a ten, eleven different projects, and that's pretty impressive to have, to juggle all that at, at one time, so really appreciate all of your effort that you've done to, to bring us forward in, in Livingston. Is it, is, is my understanding that if anybody puts a fourplex or fiveplex on, then they don't do a subdivision review? Is, is that how that works?
I'm gonna let Jennifer take that and probably explain the difference between subdivision and site plan review.
Uh I will do my best. Um uh no, it's, it's I believe it's more than ten that um then requires a subdivision review. Um if you do condos, um they don't require subdivision review, site plan review right now is only required for commercial developments. Um I think that's why Shannon wanted to review the one, it's the live work project, uh because of the work component, as far as I understand. Um but yeah, right now, we do not have um for smaller residential developments a review process. That could change depending on how we um try to align our processes and our code with the growth policy implementation. Um but for right now, that's um kind of how it works.
Okay.
Was that, did that answer? Not quite?
Sort of, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I'll double check, but I believe that the number is um yeah, because the one on Lama Lane, I, it's a, it's a fiveplex, right Shannon? I don't think I've had to go through uh any review.
Wait, so we're, we're requiring that developer to go through a site plan review, and, and to my understanding, there's three, four plexes. So it, it may be over that ten threshold. Um and I appreciate you bringing the live work project up, Jennifer, that, that is one I did not mention, but we are working with uh the developer of Murdochs for a live work project behind Murdochs. Um and then, last but not least, uh the, the subdivision that the commission ultimately approved in December, North Town. Uh we've had preliminary discussions and preliminary plan reviews uh for, for the next phases of that as well, so there's not, for a lack of work, uh when it comes to development projects in Livingston right now.
Does live work like a workforce housing?
Uh not for, for this particular, not exactly, there um and Shannon, please correct me if I'm wrong, because I was kind of looking more at the, the design details, but I was responsible for it, but for this one, it's ten units, two uh structures that have five units in each, and the living component is upstairs, and the work area is downstairs.
Oh, it's like office spaces.
Office space, uh if, if they wanna whatever, put together, you know, they, they jam or something down there and then sell it somewhere else, I mean, it's, we're, we're not looking at it as, as retail.
Hmm.
Um but it is um and there has been somebody else actually that asked about the same consideration, because we're having to kind of figure out parking requirements, because each component has its own parking requirement. But um that's the only live work project right now that I know of that's in a review, right Shannon?
Yeah, so does that mean that the person who lives upstairs has a space downstairs to work? It's not a separate, two separate entities? Same person?
The owner of the unit has the upstairs, owns the upstairs and the uh the downstairs.
And it's more like a warehouse concept?
I don't, they're, they're not that large, but um certainly uh it's an opportunity for small businesses to have a place to have their business and be able to live upstairs.
Artists working from home or any, anything like that, I mean, we haven't, we haven't said what type of work, I mean, obviously, they can't do like manufacturing, or right now, I, I retail is not on the table for that, but yeah, this is just kind of have a space where they can work.
And the size of these units are?
Uh.
Three hundred and sixty.
Unit size seventeen fifty square feet?
For these, I don't know, she, upstairs, I don't think it's any more than like a thousand square feet, is it? And then downstairs, it's less than that, because there's an area for parking, or no? No, it's all enclosed. Parking outside, right?
Parking outside, the, the, the bottom units have a kind of a drive-through garage door kind of arrangement, and and I, I do not recall what the living unit. and I, I do not recall what the living unit square footage is, but I would, I would say they're around a thousand feet.
Yeah, I don't think they're super big. It's, 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 it's going to be a, a, an affordable option too, and, and the beauty of that is if they would want to have a work component, they're not required to have a business, but it allows them to, to have that there, um, without having to drive somewhere else, because they're on the smaller side, more affordable. I mean, as far as we're aware, these are luxury units that they're putting in.
I mean, is there a minimum amount of land? Because this is a brand new category. It seems to me that it's a new category. Is it a different species? No, in the
We don't actually have a, um, a use type of this that's specific for this. The only thing we're looking at it is, is we're kind of looking at both uses, and so like for parking, for me to figure out how much parking there is, um, we're saying you need one for the, the residential part of it, one for the work part of it, but right now, we don't have a use that we have codified for live work. This is the first one, I think, one of the first ones we're seeing. So that may, if we see more of these, we may need to, you know, uh, be a little more specific, but no, this is, um, just these two, these two buildings, five units each, um.
Is this a zoning issue then, ultimately?
No, these are in areas where commercial uses are allowed, and commercial, and residential uses are allowed in any, any place but, uh, public, like industrial and, um, but yeah, this is not residential uses allowed here, commercial uses allowed here, so they're both allowed.
Are they, do you sell the unit as one unit, or can, can they purchase a unit and then rent the the business side of it out or vice versa?
Right now, I think we're just in the preliminary stages, like all, all I've done from the planning side is send a, a preliminary review of their application, and said, here's the things that I need to see to, to make sure that, that I hit my things. Shannon's um, looking with Martha at things they need for, you know, infrastructure utilities, things that are under public works. Um, our Jim Woodhull is looked at it, the things that they're gonna need for building permit. Um, but I don't, we haven't gone so far.
We haven't, we haven't received the full submittal on this one yet. We've had, we've had some preliminary plans submitted, and then we've basically provided them comments that sent them back to the drawing board to re, redo a lot of the project.
Now, is it a local developer? Do you know?
It's the same developer that, that developed Murdochs, Taco Bell, Domino's Pizza.
If you Google, you can look at some images and read some content. I've never heard of them. That's really kind of a neat concept.
I mean, it's not, it's not all that, if you think about downtown,
Yeah.
where there's retail space on the ground floor, and that there's living space above, it's, it's a similar, similar concept, except I think it's being billed as the same person who lives upstairs and downstairs. I, I think your question is, is interesting about, will it be required that the person who lives upstairs is using the downstairs? Um, but I think from like a planning perspective, I think that's like a little bit less alien, more just that they're, they're I mean, we, we've used, we've talked about the term mixed use, and this is like a really great example. It's a really great, honestly, it's a great example of utilizing precious real estate in a, in a efficient way, because instead of having a commercial space here with a bunch of parking all around it, and then a house over here, you've got them stacked up. So, um, it's, I mean, it, it sounds like a pretty interesting example of mixed use, and
Yeah.
Um, excited, I'm excited to hear that the market is bringing those ideas to us.
Yeah, and that it's potentially revenue generator for the person, I mean, you know, if you don't want to, it's like an A D U, but a, a different concept.
The one thing I will say is, it's, it's right now, we're, we're not envisioning this, at least for this development, again, this is kind of a new animal, but, um, for retail, because if it, if it is, then that changes everything about parking requirements and traffic generation, so I think it's, it's really more like a people that work from home, where they maybe have a small business, someone other person comes in kind of thing. Yeah, rather than a retail storefront.
Right, yeah, and that was the difference between sort of your downtown type scenario. Yeah, interesting, and it is interesting that the market's bringing that.
Well, and, uh, from, from what I understand, um, real estate developers really like to see a successful precedent before they, before they do something new. So if this were to happen, and if, um, those units were to sell, we might expect to see more of that kind of development in our community, so, so that to keep in mind.
I appreciate, I thi- I think this is a great discussion, and, um, you know, I, I will say, I, I know this developer, and he's developed three of the Murdochs in Bozeman area, four corners, and this, this is the first live work project that he's done as a developer, so I think it's, I think it's interesting that Livingston was the location that he's, he's trying this, so, um, we'll, we'll certainly keep everyone abreast of this one as it, as it progresses.
Thanks, Shannon.
Um, these are really pretty popular in Seattle area. And one of the cool things usually is that the price point of them is less, um. And I've seen a lot where, for whatever reason, they've had to split up to get them sold, and so there'll be somebody who's like a candle maker will go into the spot, and then some young whippersnapper will be up above, and it's just a great, it's a really cool vibe that these places have. And they're usually very, um, craft, artisan craft kind of people that are going into these, the work sections of them.
Because it looks very open, you know, you could do a lot of, whatever, sewing or you know, like manufacturing type stuff down there.
I'm just curious, is there a lot of parking associated with the ones in Seattle? Nope, because it's really just, but like you said, the one, like, if it's the person who is above, they have their one parking spot, and if it's a different person down below, they have their one parking spot. It's not a lot of employees coming in to work in this, yeah, like looking lava pot.
Chows and square foot.
And my only concern is that, um, if you have two people as a couple, whatever, they each have a, a vehicle, that there's enough, that, that there's, especially when it's out, out of town and not in downtown, that there's enough space for adequate parking beyond just one and one, because most people have cars.
Yeah, I think for right now, our residential use only requires one parking space per residence, uh, at least in this area, that's when I checked with Jim, this one came out right when I got here, but, um, I think there's also some area for this one, they're, they're extending a road through here, and I think there's, it's wide enough for them to be able to park on that street, right, Shannon? If there's a guest or whatever.
Yeah, that, that was something that we, and you specifically, uh, met with Brett about their civil engineer, and there will be adequate space for, for parking. I mean, they're, they're constructing a, a, a through street from Travertine over to Billman Lane as part of this project and, and looping the water, um. So it's, yeah, it's, it's, the, it's, it's expensive with the infrastructure improvements for extending sewer mains, water mains, um, all the asphalt, curb and gutter, stormwater, um. But, um, you know, they're moving forward with it, so I'm, I'm excited to see how it turns out.
Yeah, me too. Cool. Okay, anybody have, any other questions for Shannon before we move on? Okay, thank you, Shannon. Laundryless, per usual, things going on in the public works department. Okay. Any other comments before we adjourn?
When's our next meeting?
Um, February, when's our next meeting? Fifteen, eighteen? The third.
It'll be in the papers.
It's your third, it's the third Wednesday in February.
Two.
Fifty.
Fifty. Okay. I'm watching for John. Five. Six thirty-two. Exactly one hour from when we started. Let's vote on it.
Four.
Thank you, Shannon.
Four.
Jim?
Four.
Misha?
Or.
Stacy?
Or.
Tori?
Or.
Jesse is also four. Okay, thanks, everybody. Thanks, Stacy, for stepping up.
Well, I was gonna say, should, we should say this, thank you, Jesse.
Yeah, we give her a round of.
Yes. Thank you for also for all through the growth policy and all of that, the